All right, I'm going to call the Willet City Council January 24th meeting to order, and we'll begin with the pledge to the flag. Councilmember Stransky, will you lead us?
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Roll call. Councilmember Strong here. Connie Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Present.
May I run this?
Present.
All right. Good evening. Our next order of business is public communication, and the city council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments are limited to three minutes per person so that everyone has an opportunity to address the council. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. The city council will take no action. And then if you have at any time a matter that you would like to bring before us, if you state your name, that's helpful, and always speak from the podium. There was a request that we try to speak louder, so I'll try to do my best to speak a little louder, and that of my fellow council members. If you're in the audience, we ask that you not have any side whispers or talks, just so that we can all hear each other. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address us? All right. I see none, so I'll go ahead and move on. We have no public matters before us. We have no enactment of ordinances, so we're going to move right on to the consent calendar. We have one item, which is the January 10th city council minutes.
Go ahead. I'll let you do your spiel, and then I'll start.
No, that's okay. I was going to say, do we have any questions, comments, or?
Yes, I do. The statement about the Wood Street parking lot, has anybody been there and looked at it, let's say at this time of night, to see how dark it is?
Yes.
I mean, without a flashlight, you won't be able to find your car. And I don't care what anybody says, unless you can see at night, you can't find it. And when we get on into the agenda and we see what is going to happen on Commercial Street, this is why I'm bringing this up, is because we are the ones that are responsible, the five of us are the responsible for that, not the staff, but us. And the staff is the one that's making the calls on this. But nothing came to us saying, you know, gee, do you want this, or do you don't want this, because you guys are responsible for it. Is that not right, that we're responsible for it at the parking lot? It's dark if anything happens in it?
Well, sure, the city is responsible.
Okay, that's all I need to say. Thank you.
So Larry, so that I understand you correctly, are you asking that the, because we're on the minutes of the meeting, are you asking that the minutes are amended?
No, I'm just saying that the thing that bothered me was that-
You wanted to see us take action on it?
Right. I want to see, I want to see everything be equal in the community, and it's not. And we're divisive. There's three or four different groups of town in this town that are not even talking together. And it's because of things like this, because everybody's not treated equal.
So would it be, would you be willing to have more of a discussion about it when we get to item 11? And then because it would be under your council comments, we could then put it on the agenda?
I could do it then.
Okay.
That would be great. Thank you.
Just to be clear, the council can't take action on items that are brought up during public communication, so-
I understand all of that.
But I think that it would have been a good idea for someone, one of the council members, during their comments to say, we'd like this item to come back for discussion, and that would have been the way to get it onto an agenda.
Right.
Because I do think it's a valid concern, and it is something that I've been asking for for five years while I've been on council, because my business is right near that parking lot. I know how dark it is. I know how much the bank ladies hate walking there in the pitch black during winter. So it's my issue too. Thank you.
Okay. So as it pertains to the consent calendar, which are the minutes, do you have anything, Madge?
No, I would like to move your people.
I would like to second.
Thank you. We have our motion in a second. Do we have any comment from the public? All right, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
May I run this? Yes. All right, the motion carries. Moving on, we have the monthly activity reports. If you look inside the agenda packet, you'll find the business license activity report for December 2023, as well as the building activity report for December 2023. Are there any notes that we want to add to that, or is that sufficient? All right, seeing none, refer to those in your packet. Moving on to item seven, commissions, agencies, and authorities. We have no business before us this evening, so I'll move to the city manager reports and recommendations, the first one being the county museum.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have three items on the agenda for tonight. Three items on the agenda. And I just basically, these are informative items for the council's benefit. I think some council members have been involved in some of these items behind the scenes and in internal discussions and discussions with other agencies, so I just want to put it out there. Some of these items may come forward again in the future for council consideration, so I think this is a good opportunity to give a briefing of the status of these items. So the first one is the county museum, and I think everyone's aware, the county board supervisors are trying to decide of how to proceed with operational parameters for the museum. Are they going to maintain it? This is in light of the budget shortfalls that the county is projecting, either they have existing or they're projecting as they prepare their budgets for the fiscal year. There's been an effort by a community, an ad hoc committee at the board supervisor level that is trying to address concerns of what do we want to do? What does the board supervisors want to do with the museum? What's the best interest of the public? The city is involved. We're trying to make sure that we have a seat at that table during those discussions, because it's going to impact our community. It's going to impact the whole county, but specifically the city. So the board supervisors are looking at options. They are working with the museum staff. They're working with the community, the Mendocino County, or Community Foundation, because they are the overseers of the Bittenbender Endowment Fund. So there is some money that's there, but it's not entirely going to be released at once as the county museum moves through its process. So there is a proposal that is being presented and being discussed related to a foundation, a community nonprofit-based foundation to oversee the facility. It's compounded by the layers of responsibilities that the county have regarding the facility, with the structure, the facility itself, the artifacts, the collections, staff, and its mandate in providing cultural resources to the community, the county at large. So there is several meetings. Member Connie was attending one of the meetings. She actually attended two other meetings, but we just had a more recent meeting last week. We're hearing what the county wants to do. They're not very clear on what they want to do. They haven't presented a viable go, no-go type of plan at this stage. We're following through. We're listening. The city wants to provide resources. We're not quite sure. The council hasn't given any instructions on what those resources would be at this time, but like I said, I think this is a topic that is definitely going to come back before the council, and the council is going to have to take action, one way or the other, and provide a clear message to the board supervisors on what your intent is on that facility and for the community. Member Connie, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, I was going to make comments during the council session later. Yeah, let me get my thoughts.
Okay. So-
I have a question.
Yes.
I think I heard that the board is going to have something about the museum on their agenda, February 6.
Six.
Six.
I think that's the first Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, is that, what item would that be?
My understanding of what's going to happen is museum staff is going to present, they're going to do a presentation. They're going to talk about the ground that has been covered since September, October of last year, when the discussion was starting to gain momentum, of options available to the county on what is the best plan for the museum? To shut it in entirety and basically just keep it as a collections that is going to be rotated out on demand? Or is it to actually make a commitment, a long-term financial commitment internally through the county resources? Or transition to a community-based nonprofit foundation type of platform where they're going to be looking for partners, either directly within the community, within the county, or at a greater regional scope? That looks like to be the most promising option, but it has been thoroughly fleshed out. So that concept is going to be presented to the board supervisors at that meeting, with some nuances of the pros and cons of that approach. Hopefully, the museum staff makes it very clear to the board supervisors what they need if they are going to implement and transition from oversight provided by the county and through their resources, or to a community-based program.
Is the county board, the board supervisors potentially going to take action at that meeting?
I don't know. I have not seen how they want to present it on the agenda. I think right now, museum staff is pairing it as an informational item. The board supervisors are not ready to take action, a formal action, as of yet. The last ad hoc committee meeting that took place last week, the next approach is to identify a greater pool of stakeholders who would have an interest on how that transition or what the next model would be, allow them to have an opportunity to participate in the discussions, see what is necessary, see what is actually going to entail. This is going to be a unique opportunity for the museum, and I think they're going to get one shot at it to be successful.
Can I?
Sure.
So my take is that there are certain supervisors who are looking to solve the budget woes that the county is facing, and one of the items, one of the ways they're looking to do that is by cutting funding to the museum. Whether that means partially or completely is anybody's guess. No one is coming out and saying directly what they are intending. Museum staff is very concerned. Museum advisory board that I sit on is very concerned. These ad hoc meetings have been cloudy with no real firm statement from the county regarding what their intentions are. There has been a suggestion from Supervisor Jeridy that the city of Willets needs to step up and say what it's going to do to help preserve the museum, which is an uncomfortable conversation, because it is a countywide museum that they have a commitment to the entire community to maintain. There is discussion right now that is being proposed by, as Brian said, by the museum staff to look at a new model of organization for the museum. This is something that museums all across the state and in fact country have done to move out of the government model. It gives a lot more flexibility for a museum entity to raise funds, to increase museum programming. All of those are good things when taken out of the hands of government, which is not very good at, can't fundraise, first of all, legally, and isn't very good at taking care of that element. So it could be a potential win for the museum and for the county to move into a different structural model. However, my deepest concern is that in their attempt to save money, the board is asking the museum to cut its funding for this current fiscal year, and Willet asks for additional cuts for next fiscal year, and is asking the museum staff to work on this new structure. How they're supposed to do that while also maintaining the museum with reduced budget seems like a fool's errand. And what I asked in the meeting that Brian and I attended last week was that the supervisors come back with a strong statement of continued commitment to fund the museum wholly while it gets its feet under it and figures out how to transition into a new structure. If that happens, I'll be pleased. I'm not holding my breath.
So at the forum that we had last week, I had an opportunity to ask Supervisor Hascheck that if push came to shove, could we count on him for a vote, essentially, to keep the museum fully funded if there wasn't a partner agency? But I told him I took it as a yes, but I didn't actually get a yes, and I think that I would like to see from him a statement, a commitment, that he will vote in favor of ensuring that the museum stays funded. And I think that all of our constituents need, if the museum is important to them, and they see value in it, that they need to reach out to all five of the county supervisors and let them know that it's important, that we need the votes in order to be able to keep the museum open. For five years, every single year, the county has budget woes, and every year, the museum has been on the chopping block. We can't keep moving forward this way. But it's also not fair for the county to assume that a nonprofit partner is going to assume the financial liability. And when they say that the city of Willet should step up, the city of Willet is already making a contribution. The county museum is sitting on city land, and as we'll talk about later in the meeting as it pertains to electricity. I know there's other things that we're providing, other support services that we're providing to the museum that maybe isn't being acknowledged, so those are things to remember as well.
Yeah, I mean, these are all very valid points as this discussion takes shape and, you know, moves forward. That was my intent here, is just to bring this information to the council, have everyone hear it at the same time. I think it's going to gain momentum at the board supervisors. One other item I want to throw in there, with the benefit of a community or museum-based management structure, I was a part of a strategic planning effort that ran for about a year and a half, and Supervisor Hascheck was participating as well. That effort produced some very sound, reasonable planning and long-range strategies that we, the group doesn't have confidence that the, under county supervision or county management, those will be implemented, because they're going to, it's kind of thinking outside the box. How can you use a museum facility not to be a static display of artifacts, but how do you engage the community? How do you reach out to groups that have been underserved in this, with the resources available at that museum? How can that facility be used in a greater context? And it sounds like the board supervisors heard that, but they just, it's outside of their comfort zone of making a site work for itself, and how can you increase that presence? So-
One more comment. I do want to say, I think that Supervisor Hascheck is firmly committed to supporting the museum. I don't know how much sway he has with the rest of the supervisors to convince them to keep the museum's budget full, but I do trust that he is concerned about the museum, wants to keep it alive, and wants to keep it in Willet. So I think we have an ally there. And I also, I have to, you know, I've been, I feel like I've been a little bit of the aggressor with them in these meetings, because I am emotionally connected to it as a museum advisory board member and as a longtime supporter of the museum. But I do think that the supervisors have a huge dilemma, and they have a lot of things that they're responsible for, and this looks like an easy thing for them to clear off their plate. And so I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but I am trying to stress how important the museum is, not only to Willet, but to the county, and that I hope that they will honor their commitment to the museum going forward.
Yes.
Yeah, just, it's too late to have the city take a position, because we aren't prepared to do it tonight for that February 6th meeting, but I just wanted to encourage anybody, citizens of Willet, citizens of the rest of the whole county, to show up or submit comments before that board meeting, so that all five board members know that this is an important item for our community and our citizens and our history. And I really agree with Councilmember Connie's comment, that what we want is the county to continue to support the museum fully until a transition has been implemented. And for them to sort of hear about a potential transition and meanwhile start cutting the budget is just unconscionable. It's not acceptable.
Well, I don't know that it's too late for us to direct the city manager to write a letter on our behalf to let them know that we want the county to support the museum until a better plan is in place. Correct?
Well, this is just, as a verbal report with no action. So the council as a whole can't take action. Individually, members could.
Under this item?
Right.
Okay.
Or subsequent discussion.
Okay.
But I think your intent was made very clear.
Okay.
So I appreciate that. Second item, once again, our friends at the county, tax sharing agreement. This project has been unfolded, been proceeding for two-plus years. I think the finish line is in sight. At least, that's what I've been told. I still haven't seen the finalized document. There's two separate groups really working on it. The county has a separate attorney who's drafting up certain provisions of it. Ucaia has retained a council to work on their portion of the document as well. For informational purposes, the document as is configured, and as configured over a year ago, meets our needs. It meets the needs of the city of Willet if we enter into any type of annexation requests with the county. The holdup in this whole process was how do you untangle the mess of development in the Ucaia Valley without the county losing too much tax generating and tax revenue generating properties, and how would the, make sure that the Ucaia doesn't all of a sudden have a windfall? So there is, that's where this whole process was getting, was being held up, was trying to work through those mechanics. And that literally is an example of bad planning, bad policy over decades, and the effort of that ad hoc committee was trying to bring some sense of scope and clarity to this very unique, just travel through the Ucaia Valley on the fringes, and you'll just see all these land uses that should be within a incorporated community or not, and then the county has got used to that tax revenue. They couldn't, they just can't walk away from that. So the intent right now is, the final document, should at least the ad hoc committee with the board supervisors should be briefing the other board members of the status of the document, and the goal is that hopefully by the end of February, a final document will be presented to the board supervisors for adoption, or at least for a presentation. Hopefully, all the other board members understand the intent. They've been briefed by their staff, as well as the other, the ad hoc committee members. Once it passes that level, then it will be routed to the other jurisdictions. All four cities are, been briefed, they've been made aware. There's other separate provisions related to Fort Bragg. Fort Bragg has undergone a transition in city management. We've been working with the new manager, bringing them up to speed. They were not aware of the status of this effort, and we want to make sure they're aware of the unique provisions that relate to Fort Bragg, and they're getting up to speed on that. Port Arena, Port Arena has no intentions of annexing land anytime soon. They're okay. The city, yes, but if we do annex land in properties, existing development sites, it is residential, and this provision is really weighted to commercial, you know, property, Bradley Burns generators. So the intent is to get a document to the municipalities in unison, probably in March or April timeframe.
Do you see if this falls apart, that individually, cities with the county would hammer something out so that we could proceed with an annexation if we needed to? I just kind of see the Ucaia thing not settling anytime soon.
Give a little faith, huh? The intent is, is we wanted to negotiate the four municipalities as one voice to the county. The negotiation process was entrusted to Ucaia and myself, so two city managers, we were representing the four. We were briefing the other municipalities. And we are confident, and like I said, I could have requested Willet's break out, went through a separate process, but we didn't want to do that. We wanted to present that unified front or that face to the county. It's much more effective. We weren't on the, you know, under any pressure to start annexing, so we had that opportunity to delay it. Ucaia appreciated that opportunity, that support, because it helped them go through this process. The nuances with this one project or this agreement is rather unique. It's very elaborate on certain provisions, but then there's a catchall that basically says any municipality can go into, enter into separate agreement that bypasses the body of the provisions. That was kind of the saving grace for the county in Ucaia. So worse comes to worse, if we enter, if this document is approved and is implemented, if we go through annexation, we always have that provision that we can invoke and utilize to our benefit. It still doesn't negate Lakel provisions, or Laffco provisions, as well as there is an oversight that any proposal would have to go to the county board supervisors to kind of get their acknowledgement. It's not required. We still don't know exactly how that process is going to be defined, what are the provisions of that, even if the board supervisors are uncomfortable with that proposed annexation, but it's in there. So it's an interesting process to see how all the perspectives, all the opinions came together and crafted a document that tried to address four unique settings in this county.
All right.
I have a question, which isn't directly about the agreement, but a few years back, there was a lack of transparency about data on the different tax rate areas and how, because the county is responsible for collecting all of the property taxes, and then based on the tax rate area, distributing that to each of the cities and incorporated areas and other entities that get a share. And there wasn't very clear information coming out of the county. Is that still the case about, like, do we have a historic?
Member Strong has brought up a good point. So a year into this process, when we were at the point where we were nailing down the provisions, actually the formula to use on what is a, you know, beneficial tax, you know, what is the tax benefit that one organization or one entity would gain and one would lose, we didn't put a request into the county for, we took a couple of model properties and said, okay, we need their tax formula rates, so we could plug in and see what the pros and cons of that request would be. We never got the data. So it was, it made the effort difficult, so a lot of that, the formula creation was based off assessments. We basically ran with what we thought the numbers would be. They're pretty close. You know, taxes, you know, tax generation changes over, you know, seasons and times, so we put a bracket together and used the kind of the average numbers. We don't have, we didn't have, we couldn't put together the exact numbers, but we felt confident we were close.
Yeah, it was disturbing to me at the time, and I haven't been asking this question again since then, but that we didn't, for example, if the county assessor doesn't reassess property when it is improved or built upon or whatever, they're supposed to then reassess, and then of course, the new assessed value is the basis for the taxes, and some portion of that goes to the county, some portion goes to the city, some portion goes to, you know, to the cemetery districts-
Yes.
-and so forth. And it seemed like we didn't have clear information about any of that, about are the reassessments happening, how much is being generated from?
There is an effort to approach that, but the goal is to finish this agreement, get it adopted, and then look at that, the allocations to the different municipalities based off the formulas.
Okay, well, it seems like good government should require nothing less than that.
Oh, we agree. But, you know, we, Ucaia was leading the effort on trying to get the data. They basically said that, you know, it's a lost cause, you know, do we, do the municipalities follow suit to gain the data? Recognize that was to delay the process. The goal was greater than trying to fight this fight for minimum benefit.
In other words, one at a time with the county, and this one's first, and then we tackle the next one.
Okay. So on that, just to enclose here on that one, I expect, if everything goes well with the county in the next month, month and a half, that we'll be presenting this document for consideration to- for consideration to the municipalities' elected officials. And just one other item on that, that is a goal that the city council here has made in your adopted goals was a, having a, a master tax sharing agreement in place. So if you can check that box. And lastly, it's just a brief update because the project will be starting in roughly two months, and I have Walter here, he can jump in here. The 2023 pavement preservation plan, yes, it's 2024, we're delayed by six months, but it's a good project. Basically, let me get my notes here so I have everything correct. As you recall, back at your December 13th meeting, the council accepted and awarded the bid for the construction project to Budalier. Walter has been in communication with their construction team over there, starting the initial scoping of the project, getting schedules, been talking internally that what, what we learned from West Mendo, we're going to get as much information out in, in advance to the community and to residents to minimize impacts they're going to experience during construction. So basically, Bascabel and South Lenore will be subject to about 37,000 square feet of pavement rehabilitation. There's going to be sidewalks, going to be ADA corners or ADA ramps put in there, some new sidewalks and some drainage improvements. Pretty significant project in that area. Now, that was something that was identified through the pavement preservation plan as well as the capital improvements plan.
When you do this, are you?
Just thank you.
When you do this, I've had people from the community that live on these streets want to know what's going to happen with a red curbing. And that seems to be a really big deal with them because you only can park on one side of the street on this. And that was a real, I've had people that, you know, just couldn't believe it, that that's the way that it is, but is that going to be dealt with also?
That topic was presented by a council member a year or so ago. We looked at it at staff level. We looked at our transportation safety committee. We also had our engineers or, no, excuse me, our planners and traffic engineers that were responsible for the traffic safety plan. They took a look at it and their recommendation, unfortunately, I can't recall the exact details, but at this time, the parking configurations are going to remain the same until we're completing, until the street project is complete and then we'll revisit it.
Answer your question?
Not really, but okay. Thank you very much. I mean, next?
Yeah, I mean, right now, it's, it's construction focused. Once we get that done, we'll take another look at the parking configurations.
Apparently, there's a new law that says that, I guess, red zones go into play in private parking next to crosswalks and non-marked crosswalks?
Yes, they extend the red curbing from the intersections inward on the block, so it would reduce parking capacity. We are aware of that. That, that state statute came into effect January 1st.
So they might not get their?
The states, the states making some more decisions for us locally.
And just finally, uh, let's see, so that is basically, the first phase of that project would be 37,000 square feet of pavement rehabilitation, sidewalks, pedestrian ramps. We're addressing some driveway approaches or aprons in that neighborhood and approximately 2,000 square feet of sidewalk replacement. So that is all going to be tied. So we're working for, within the right of way, working on sidewalks, curbs, ramps, and then pavement. And then the other phase of that project is approximately about 11,000 square feet of digouts on, back though.
All right.
2,000 square feet of sidewalk is not very much, is it?
No, no.
It just, that's what?
Yeah, it's spaced throughout the, the construction zone. It's not continuous. It's going to be the worst problematic areas.
Any questions on the, any follow-up questions? Anybody from the public? Nope. Okay, I'm going to move on to item?
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item 9A. These are department recommendations. These are also action items. The first one is to adopt a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Community Development Services for assistance with implementing a permanent local housing allocation program for an amount not to exceed $35,263 through grant reimbursement. And our presenting staff member will be Dusty Dooley from, he's our community development director.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Yeah, so what we're looking for is support on entering into a professionals as a service agreement with Jeff Lucas and his team at Community Development Services for assistance in implementing our, our local housing rehab program. So council may recall that we were awarded approximately $371,000 to create a city revolving loan program to rehab aging housing to eligible income families within the city limits. I do also want to note that we are anticipating additional allocation of $91,000 later this year as well as in, in 2025, next year. And so in total, we're expecting approximately $550,000, $53,000 to, to support this, this program. You may remember Jeff Lucas and his team from teaming up with the city for our previous business loan program where we were able to, to successfully award and forgive loans to a, a number of businesses throughout the city. And I've got to say that Community Development Services is, is highly sought after by local governments. They are CDBG gurus. They know the ins and outs of working with HCD. And they said they had such a good time working with city staff last time that they're anxious to team up with us again, and, and the feeling is mutual. We're looking to enter into the agreement for not to exceed the amount of $35,263. And we're looking to, for the agreement to extend out through the end of 2026, recognizing again that, that we'll be obtaining and loaning out funds over, over the next few years here. The, the $35,000 and change that will support CDS will be paid for completely from the grant award. And just to kind of a little bit of details, we have been working behind the scenes developing loan documents and some, some other components and had to share those with the state to get their sign off. And then with, we previously entered into a contract with Lakel. So with Jeff Lucas and his team on board, we'll, we'll have the full group together and we'll be holding a kickoff meeting here shortly to develop the program guidelines. We'll be bringing those back before council. We'll be planning to have some media, community meetings to inform folks about the program, the eligibility requirements, and, and then get the program going, hopefully in the next few months.
So will the community meetings take place before the application period opens?
Absolutely.
There are some concerns from the community that there will be so many applicants right off the bat that we may not have sufficient funds. I didn't see anything in the document that specified the amount so that we could, I'm not sure if our attempt is to maximize the number of people we can serve or?
Yeah.
For this, do we have a sense of what we're looking?
Well, maybe, but one of the, the key decisions, I, I think that, that, you know, that staff will, will be thinking about and bringing a recommendation forward for council consideration is the maximum amount that we could have for, for each loan. And you're correct, there's, there's probably going to be more need than, than funds that are going to be available through this program. When you look at our latest housing element, one of the things that stands out for, for me anyways is that we have an aging housing stock. Many of our, our homes in the city are over 40 years, if not 60 years old. And so when we, you know, talk about, you know, the need for housing stock, I think part of that is also making sure that we take care of our existing housing stock. And, and I think council was wise in establishing that goal and guiding us to, to, to develop this program. But the truth of the matter is, is that we're probably going to have more applications than, or more need for the, for the, the funding than we can currently provide.
And we, when we had talked before, we were talking about the potential of having this program ready to, for people to be able to submit applications by early summer. Is that still the goal?
That, that is still the goal.
Okay.
Yeah, so hopefully folks will be able to take advantage of these funds and, and make use of them during part of this upcoming construction season.
Okay. Anybody else?
So these folks will help us develop some sort of scoring plan and procedure for this program? Is that how it would work?
It's, it's, it's not assumed that we're going to set this up as a, as a competitive process. There probably will be likely some sort of intake, a system that's set up to make sure that people have provided the correct information, that they are eligible for the program. Again, there is going to be an income contingency component to this per, per the state requirements. But it hasn't been assumed that we're going to have like a competitive process. It could be more like a first come, first served. But again, that's another thing that, that we need to hash out and develop some recommendations for council.
I just wanted to reiterate that this is for city residents only. I had several people reach out to me in the fall when this was first presented from Pine Mountain and Brook Trails, and unfortunately, this is not for them.
That, that's correct. And if I could just tag on to that and say there, you're welcome to call the department now and, and ask questions, but we're setting up the program. You know, the money is not available yet to loan out. We have some steps that we have to go through. There will be community meetings, workshops prior to that. So I'm happy to ask questions, but I do want to explicitly state and clarify that the money is not available at this moment in time. And that's something that we ended up fielding quite a few calls and people were coming up to me at the different community events, letting me know that they are interested in, including relatives. So I do want to clarify that. But again, I think it points to, to what you brought up, Mayor, that I think we have a lot of folks that could benefit from this program.
I really think that this is a really good item. And we've needed to do this for a long time because it's just real hard for people that are on, on the same fixed income to do anything with their house. And then if they can come up with something like this to do it over a period of time, it's just a really step in the right direction and you definitely have my vote on this one. This one's, this one's a good one.
Thank you, council members. Stransky, this is definitely a feel-good item for staff. And maybe a, just another quick point to, to make is this is set, being set up as a revolving loan program. So if unfortunately, you're not able to access, let's say that the first round of allocations, you know, will be, it may be that, you know, when, when the person who receives the loan goes to, to sell their property or, you know, that, that funding would get repaid to the program as part of that sale and then would be available to loan out to the next person. So this is being set up as an ongoing program.
I just want to state again, I know we talked about that June 1st type kind of goal, but we know that if the application opens in June 1st, that actual funding could take up to, you know, maybe even 90 days before we're seeing money in a homeowner's hand. And then that's putting us in the fall and then it makes it more challenging to hire that contractor as you get into the rainier time. So even just being able to move that up a month or two can make a difference in somebody being able to get something fixed before it becomes more of a problem.
Yeah, that, that is absolutely true. And there, there are some things under our control, you know, where we can prioritize and make things happen. But again, this is a state grant series. HCD is known to be a little bit tricky. We've already had a couple of them. But the good news is we've got a really solid team, provided we can bring CDS on here with, with this agreement to help us navigate. But there are some things where it's going to go back into the state's lap and, and we don't have control over those timelines. So I'll definitely fall short of making any promises tonight, but we recognize that this, this money could be used sooner than later and we'll do our best to prioritize it.
Any further questions or comments up here? I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public that wants to discuss this matter? Seeing none?
I'd like to move staff recommendations.
We have a motion? We have a second on the motion. I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor? Yes, so the motion carries 5-0. And the motion is to adopt the resolution approving a professional services agreement with Community Development Services for assistance with implementing a permanent local housing allocation program and the amount is not to exceed $35,263. All right.
I just want to make sure that the public, if you're listening, is the $35,000 is the administrative contract and that's not the amount of money that's available for the actual program, which is?
Right. The action, the action item was to spend $35,263.
Just wanted to make that clear.
To provide those services. Thank you, councilmember Strong. All right. Our next item is 9B, which is to adopt a resolution accepting the construction of the City Hall and Art Center roof replacement project, project number 2023-02, and authorizing the filing of the notice of completion. The completed project total is $333,819.18. The presenting staff member is Davy Bowles, our building official.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Rodriguez, councilmembers. That summed it up, so thank you very much.
Will you give us some detail?
So that's, that's exactly right. Just kind of sum up the project. We did have, you know, 21,000 change in, change orders. We had a deductive change order where the city actually purchased the skylights just for ease and, you know, theoretically it was speed of obtaining the skylights. We, we have improved the roof on this building quite drastically. In the original project, we assumed there's two layers of roofing up there. In some places, there was 10. They took off, I wish I would have brought the tonnage, but we took off approximately four and a half tons of roofing material, this building, this tire relief. Yeah, there's four layers of torched-down roofing. Asphalt is an amazing amount. We ended up redoing the gutter trough on the west side, which was ultimately a flat gutter trough. After we removed the roof, we realized there's extensive amount of rot under that, which was partly because of the flat construction of it. It didn't really drain very well. So there's, that was a large improvement to our drainage up there and just the product in general. The new TPO is going to give us a much better product. So they did a, BAS Roofing did a pretty good job for us. They've been responsive to a couple little changes and things we've had to come have them just address. This is a very complicated roof. Not many barrel roofs that drain back into your building are made anymore. But I think the outcome is pretty nice. We have a nice-looking roof and the new solar panels match pretty nicely with the new, new colors. Yeah, so this is a resolution authorizing city manager, vendor to sign the notice of completion and have Delores record at the county board's office. Does anyone have any questions about the project?
So this procedure allows us to release the rest of the money to BAS Roofing?
Correct. Yeah, it basically just puts on notice. We didn't have a, they didn't file any, no one filed liens on this property. The contractor paid for all materials outright. Typically, what happens is the contractor will purchase materials, that supplier, supplier will file a pre-lean, putting us on notice that, hey, I've supplied materials to your project. If I don't get paid, you know, we'll see.
And that's the reason we have this procedure, right?
That's the whole reason for this, yes. So that's why.
All right. I kind of knew the answer, but I kind of wanted to let the public know.
And so there are no pre-leans for this project, so.
And, and from what I gather, BAS did a great job and you've been responsive, you said. So, and I've heard from other members of the community that they've dealt with BAS and they thought they did really good work.
Yes, they did a fine job for us.
All right.
We talked a little bit about City Hall, but I maybe elaborate a little bit on the fact that the Art Center also received a new roof.
Yes, I apologize for that.
Yeah, I know.
This has been such a focus in my mind, getting this project down, the Art Center. getting this project done, the Art Center. But yes, the Art Center did receive a 30-year Pabco premier roof. Um, and, uh, hopefully we don't have any more issues of leaks over there either. Um, nothing, nothing exciting happened to that roof. It was pretty much a, pretty much-
Well, I think the exciting part is that there won't be any leaks over there. And, and it does also demonstrate that your tax dollars are supporting art in the community, and we're very lucky to have a, an art center here, and it's just one more, you know, it's one more thing that the city's doing to support art in our community. When people ask, how is our city supporting art? Well, we're making sure that there's a, there are a roof on our building that we're maintaining, among the many other ways. So that's important, too. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody from, from the public that would like to address us on this matter? All right. Very none. I'll bring it back up here.
I'll move to adopt.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second, and I'll call for the votes. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes. The motion carries five zero, and the completed project total came to $333,819.18 for the record. All right, moving on to item C is to adopt a resolution accepting the construction of the City Hall Power Resiliency Project, project number 2023-05, and authorize the filing of the notice of completion. The completed project totals $163,463. And again, Davy Bolz.
Thank you, Mayor Rodriguez, councilmembers. Um, so this is another exciting project. Uh, councilmembers, um, we were awarded a CalOES grant a few years back in the amount of $149,000, um, to install this power resiliency project, which was to install solar and also battery backup for City Hall for emergency, um, use during PSPSs, uh, power safety shutdowns from PG&E. Um, so this was a long, hard fought project. We were right up against the wall of time. We had till December 31st to spend all these funds and have the project completed. Um, and we made that just under the wire. Um, so the project is completed. We did have a handful of change orders. When we awarded this project, I believe Councilmember Strong asked why we asked for 15 percent. So they have a regular 10 percent on change orders. Um, and as you can see, we just came a slight bit over that original 10, the standard 10 percent. Uh, we had, uh, we have quite a bit of old conduit up on the roof. Um, and when we're installing all these new panels and, and putting in new conduit for this new solar, um, it was great because we were able to remove all the old EMT, which is actually not exterior rated EMT, and it was very rotten and falling apart. Um, all of our conduit up there was sitting on two-by-four blocks. Um, just a very kind of haphazard situation and just, um, kind of a Band-Aid approach to the electrical situation up there. So we were able to, um, clean all that up with the install of this, um, uh, new project as well. When we basically to get that out of the way for the existing solar, that went back on the roof, as well as the new solar and conduit routing, um, up there on the roof to make it, uh, safer and more accessible for maintenance. Um, so that was a huge success. We did another small change order with, um, our panel. We took out a sub-panel, and, um, we were able to, um, basically take out that sub-panel and add it to our dedicated, um, emergency-powered sub-panel. So we have more, um, more lights and, uh, phones and everything, more items on the emergency backup system because our system does include, um, two large battery banks. It supplies 75 kilowatt-hours of, um, battery power, so when the power goes out. Um, so the only thing we really do not have on that are the HVAC system, which is a three-phase system, which it would deplete batteries in seconds. Um, so that's the only thing really the city doesn't have on battery backup right now, which is pretty exciting, um, to know that it'll be blink of an eye, we won't even notice, and no noise, generator backup power, just batteries.
Question for you. So we can't run the heater either, right?
Yeah, HVAC is a heater and air conditioner.
Yeah, so middle of winter, we, at least we can run our computers and lights.
Yeah, computers, lights, telephone, all the emergency contact stuff.
But we'll just have to huddle with our blankies.
Huddle with the masses. And so we do, the other issue is we do have, uh, the, the agreement with PG&E that we signed to be a cooling and heating station for PSPSs. Um, so that generator is still, um, that is still in, wired into our system, so they still provide that. I think we're in contract for another three years of that.
And they would bring us that, or is it still?
And they supply that generator during the, the fire season.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So I'm just curious. It feels really great to have the roof, the roofs and the power resiliency project done. Do we have any sort of plan moving forward to make sure that we don't end up in the future with 10 layers of roofing, or that our, um, power resiliency project remains current and, um, up to date? So do we have some kind of like new policies or timelines to check in on these things and make sure that they're aging well?
Yeah, so the nice thing about the new solar is they have, they carry a much longer warranty period, and so that goes along with the longevity of those items. The warranty pretty much is, you know, set by bean counters. They tell you exactly, you know, they warranty it to when it's going to die. And so the, the warranties on these products have gone out 15 years compared to previous five. Um, so we assume that this should last 15 percent, 15 years. Um, and then there is a slow taper as it drops off. They never become fully, you know, to zero instantly. It's just a slow kind of degradation once you get that, once you get past the aging point. Um, we do have, coming up in the, uh, in the agenda is the new solar proposal, and that does include additional solar for this facility to help offset the actual, the further energy use of this building. Um, the other item that we are looking at to help, um, be a little more energy efficient is our HVAC system. Um, we just had an HVAC, uh, go out, and we just had it repaired last week. Um, but those are also aging up to approximately 30 years old. Um, so that is the other thing in the future here. We're going to be getting a, a plan together with how we can replace those in an intelligent manner, to something that's more energy efficient, that can also tie into now we have, um, solar power, get something that's more energy efficient, and something that could be tied to our battery system. Um, but as far as replacing those 15 years down the road, that's something we haven't discussed.
15-year budgeting?
Think ahead.
Good. Councilmember Strong?
I also wondered if we will have an automatic, a tickler file or something, so a year from now, we can compare what kinds of energy usage we used to have and what we're having now, the cost of it, and also the energy and, and fossil fuel impact of those changes that we're making. And that it would be really helpful to do, have an annual, um, audit of, of how we're doing with those things. If we had had that up at the water treatment plant, we might not have gone so many years with a really terrible contract that we didn't realize we were, were not getting the advantage out of our solar arrays. But I, I would love to see that, a before and after picture.
Yes, well, we can definitely look into that for you.
Anything else up here? No? Anybody from the public have a question on this item? All right. Want to bring it back up here and entertain a motion?
I will move to, um, adopt a resolution accepting the construction of the, is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
The power resiliency project. I did also want to point out, though, that, um, this does, um, address the council's adopted goal of moving Willets towards becoming an environmental city.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We'll call for the vote. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez? Yes. The motion carries five zero, and we'll move on to item 9D, request for proposal for energy services including onsite solar, um, photolithic system design, engineering, and build. The proposed project consists of a 3.0 kilowatt solar photovoltaic, volt take? Volt take, carport system at City Hall. And I'll let you go ahead and give all the details.
Okay, well, I, I'll go ahead.
There's quite a bit to it, so go ahead.
Thank you. I'll, I'll probably abbreviate photovoltaic with P.
Okay.
Thank you, councilmembers. Leilani Schein, contract planner of Community Development. Uh, so this request for proposal is intended to provide an opportunity to, for the city to explore and evaluate all the options for solar system installations that would offset power consumption for different city facilities, which would include the wastewater treatment plant and City Hall. Uh, so part of the goal of this RFP is to solicit proposals for solar providers or energy service companies, um, and to, to use those proposals so that the city can review those and choose the best rate plan, system ownership, um, the equipment and maintenance, all of that, based on what proposal they provide. Um, and so a rate revenue increase has already been factored through the water and waste, uh, wastewater rate study of 7 percent. Uh, that was allocated already for a solar array project to reduce long-term energy costs for the wastewater treatment plant. So approximately $2,822, or $822,400 in inflated dollars have been allocated from that 7 percent rate increase for the fiscal year 2025 and 2026. Um, so the reason that, that City Hall and the wastewater treatment plant both are listed as, as potential locations is the city worked last year during the, the rate change. Uh, it's the net energy metering rate, NEM, so I'll just call it NEM 2.0 through the presentation. So we, we went from 2.0, and it switched, uh, last year to 3.0, but we were able to get applications in for City Hall and for near the ballpark to, to supplement the wastewater treatment plant. Those two interconnection applications were successfully submitted to PG&E. So that's, that's part of why we're, we're focusing on those locations. Um, we've also looked at, uh, when we talked to the Public Utilities Commission, there's another rate program that is called, this is a long one, the Renewable Energy Self-Generation Bill Credit Transfer, RES-BCT. Um, so RES-BCT is, is basically for jurisdictions to offset, uh, their energy consumption, but it does not have to be parcels that are side by side. You can have a solar array at a different location and still offset power at a city location in a different area. I think it's a little different with the NEM rates where you're, you're looking at parcels that are touching, um, as part of city facilities to include a solar installation. Um, so, uh, this RFP, if approved, would be issued tomorrow, January 25th, and would close on February 29th. It's a leap year. Um, respondents to this RFP would need to demonstrate their ability to complete all project deliverables. Um, and if we choose to use the net energy metering, NEM, uh, status, that installation has to be completely installed by April 15th, 2026. Um, and so they would be working with PG&E to finalize that rate contract and, and to figure, figure, finalize that installation, uh, by April 15th, 2026. So this RFP is requesting proposals from these, uh, solar providers and/or energy service companies to deliver a complete project, including project development, design, engineering, installation, uh, and coordination for these at least two turnkey solar installations. So, uh, an additional location, uh, if we wanted to have a third location for solar panel arrays, um, we're possibly looking at the field that's near the wastewater treatment plant, that's city property, but because that location was not submitted for, through the NEM rate, it would really only be viable if the city decides to use that other rate plan, the RES-BCT. Um, and so having a, um, installations that meet the NEM contract status, we would be looking at a 38-kilowatt, uh, system here at City Hall. So we talked about potentially having two carports or a carport somehow either on this side and, and the other side, and also an 821-kilowatt, kilowatt ground mount, uh, system that could be ground mount or combined with carport, um, uh, installation area at the sports park. Um, and so the, the sports park area would, would offset that energy cost for the wastewater system, whereas likely the, the city installation would just be offsetting the power for City Hall. Um, so the city through, look, this RFP would want to see, uh, options for system ownership. So if we wanted to look at something that we did before as a power purchase agreement, that was what it sounds like was done with the, the water treatment plant, if we would rather do something that's, the city owns it, need at least a purchase, uh, or an energy services agreement, that's all what we're looking for through this request for proposal is basically our options, um, for that. Um, so the city has allocated that $2,822,400 towards that financing for a solar array, but the idea behind this RFP would also be to see if that is a, is a viable amount for budgeting. If other companies come forward and say that additional financing is needed, we would also want to see what those options are for additional financing. Um, so to date, just to recap what Davy was saying about our current installations, uh, the city has 26 kilowatts of rooftop solar system and 75 kilowatts of connected batteries here at City Hall. We also have 830 kilowatts of connected Tesla batteries at the wastewater treatment plant and a 422.25-kilowatt ground mount system serving the water plant. Um, so are there any other questions?
Oh, yeah. We're sure we've got a few.
Yeah, the goal is to be as broad as we can and to, to try to have the scope changed to, so that you can review it in the future as well. Stransky?
Who picked the spots?
Uh, I think this was worked out between city staff and, uh, they were working with a company, Sizer Co., for those interconnection applications, uh, for City Hall and the wastewater treatment plant last year.
Did that ever come up to anybody other than city staff and whatever? I mean, are, was that the only people that made the call on this, of where this goes?
Correct. Yeah, correct.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And I know who to blame.
So, so that I get this in perspective, what you said, the, if these get installed down there by the, uh, by the museum, et cetera, that's close enough under the one-rate plan to offset power at the, um, at the sewer plant, and that installation could be paid for by rate parity.
Through the capital improvement.
Yeah, capital improvements, et cetera.
Correct.
But if, um, the only way that the, uh, solar here at City Hall would benefit that is if we went on the other program, not the one, because it's got to be contiguous. Is that correct? Or would this never benefit the offset?
Well, that, that might be a little more technical than, than what I can provide, too. I, I think that's something we've been trying to research, but we would want to find that answer out from the, the proposals that-
So the proposal might say, hey, you're, might be better off, um, going that rate plan, because, I mean, the concern I had initially when I saw this was, I don't want to do solar just for the sake of, hey, it's, it's fashionable. I, I want to do it because, I mean, face it, we're all tired of paying PG&E, and as a city, and as rate payers, et cetera, we're, we, we want to, we want to save the environment, but we want to save money. And, and so that's the end result that I want to see, is that. And I also want to be in a position where we're not, um, kind of in that last agreement we had, that I'm sure everybody thought they were doing the right thing, but, um, I think, uh, Brian told me that, uh, Jim would be working with, uh, prior attorneys or something to make sure that whatever we end up ironing out the end, that we don't, uh, get in some sort of weird carfunkel- the end, that we don't get in some sort of weird carfunkel, I guess.
Right, if I could on that point, as, as council member Strong mentioned a few minutes ago, that horrible water solar project we had about 10 years ago, we did have problems with that. And it produced too much energy, that wasn't a benefit to the city, and there were billing problems. And that was the very first time the city did a solar project. And we did not hire experts, sufficient experts, I think, to assist us in that. And then about three years ago, we engaged a firm in Sacramento, Day Carter and Murphy. And that firm are experts in this area of the law and assisted us in terminating that power purchase agreement and in allowing the city to acquire that system. And we had a good relationship with an attorney in that firm named Anne Throwbridge. And I spoke with her today, and Leilani was on a call with us, and I introduced the two of them and told, asked Anne whether her firm would have an interest in assisting us along with our consultant to make sure we're making the right moves, selecting the right system, and also, once a system is selected, making sure that our contract with the contractor serves the city well. And she said that's what she does day in and day out. That's, that's her bread and butter, and she would very much like to, to assist the city in this. And so I think Leilani would be her point person should legal issues come up, and we'll have a better, we'll have a better team going forward this time.
And I guess another part to this, too, is that the, and I guess the, the purpose of this, as I, as I read all of this, was to offset our energy use at those facilities, et cetera. It wasn't to provide lighting in those areas. Is that correct? It's to offset, it's to collect the sun and take advantage of that power and so we're not providing lighting in those areas.
Yes, you are.
Is that?
If you read, if you read this, you said that on the one here at the ballpark areas providing the lighting for.
If, if there's a carport installation.
Also, there would have lighting under the carport only?
If we add, that was a suggestion, if we choose to do carports.
But not for the ballpark itself, just for the carport?
Correct, yeah.
All right. All right.
Can someone correct me if I'm wrong? I seem to recall Andrea talking about this last year or maybe 18 months ago, that we were seeing increasing costs for electricity at both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. And in order to protect the Willets rate payers, the goal was to find a way to build a solar system that would help us essentially control the rates that we were paying for electricity, that it would be an investment upfront, but that we would have better control over rising costs. Is that, does that jog anybody's memory?
That's my recognition of what we were doing, which is why I'm going to have a question here in a second.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that that was, that was how this sort of started moving forward, that we recognized that rates were increasing astronomically and only going to continue to do so, and that this was an effort for the city to gain some kind of way to protect the taxpayers.
Correct. So that's why the focus here, as Jim mentioned, there's already a complex or a ray complex up at the water production facility. Now we're looking at the other large electricity user in our inventory, which is the wastewater treatment facility. Unfortunately, there's some complexities with that location to fully utilize. That's why you have to be off-site with the arrays. I want to be very clear. The project, and this goes to the comment that Member Stransky has made, nothing is set yet. This is a proposal to gain, to attain and retain one or multiple consultants to advise the council and this organization through this very complex process. The project that you see delineated in this RFP may change under advisement once we retain professional vice. The locations of the arrays may change, the, the locations of specific parts are not fixed with this application. This is just to start this process, I've said this to other council members recently, we typically do not bring an RFP release approval to the council. This is something that's done at staff level, we release the RFP, we select a, whatever we're selecting, a service or a firm, and then we bring that proposal to the council for your consideration, ultimately enter into a contract. Hearing all the comments and knowing that this project dates back two-plus years, the key staff person who was assigned to this project is no longer with the organization. So Leilani was drafted in, she's done an excellent job to get up to speed, get this RFP in the fashion that you see now for your consideration. So please do not get so hung up on specifics with the project. Look at the concept. As Member Connie has noted, this is a effort to reduce our energy reliance on PG&E and secure better rates for a critical infrastructure for the city.
So if we, if we agreed to pass this RFP this evening and it had a price tag of 2.8 million and we didn't give additional input this evening about how we feel about this project, would it be fair to say that, that staff would assume that we would be asking the consultants to look at a project that's going to cost 2.8 million dollars and they would work on that? And there would be work that would take place before it would come back to council for additional input?
I'm trying to understand. So the question, the 2.8 is a, a working number now, and that's basically telling potential submitters, that's where our comfort zone is for this project. As we approach a selection process, we're hopefully going to convey the importance of the project, what the council intentions are. And we could bring, as, if the council approves the greenlining of this RFP, in the subsequent meetings, we can bring updates and insight and have a further discussion of what your understanding of this project is going to do, the impacts, the financial commitment the council is going to have to make long-term. There's a lot of moving parts to this, and there's going to be some flexibility. And that is, we want to make sure that council understands that.
Hold on, Chair. I guess the reason that I have a question is, is because it says the intent, the intent is to offset energy consumption at the wastewater treatment plant, the library, the museum, and City Hall, and the funds are going to come from the water and sewer funds, correct?
Sewer.
Sewer funds, which rate, sewer rate payers within the city of Willets would be paying for maybe a larger solar panel than's necessary to serve sewer customers' interests because we're talking about City Hall, which a portion of that is related to sewer, but the library and the museum, I'm not saying that I have an opinion one way or the other, but I just want to make sure that I have the facts. And as I understand the facts, we would be discussing a solar array that would offset energy there out of water, out of sewer funds.
Could I comment on that?
So I'm trying to understand that.
Yeah, when I read, when I read the agenda summary on that, I wondered whether that's appropriate for a city energy infrastructure system being used to offset consumption at non-city facilities like a museum and a library. And I looked at the, looked up the Public Utilities Code section on that, and it appeared to me that that's not permissible and that a, a city can use that generating facility of the cities to apply to energy consumption at other city-owned and operated facilities, but not in other agencies' facilities. And so that was my preliminary understanding. And then today on our phone call with Attorney Throwbridge, I asked that very question, and she says, I'm going to look at the code and send you an email on that, but I think that's absolutely right. I think it can only apply to other city facilities. And so I think that, I think that with the information that we just have developed yesterday and today, that we would, we would not be seeking to apply credits toward the accounts, the PG&E accounts for the library or the museum, that the code does not allow for that.
So if that was the case, was it, did we initially arise to the?
No.
Did we come up with a number of 2.8?
No, that was a late addition.
Because of those?
No.
No. So we, we still may be just with, trying to support the wastewater treatment plant and City Hall, we may still in fact be at that 2.8 projected project total?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to really understand the facts. I'll turn it over to the place where.
Okay. I guess where I was getting at is that just because it sits there, I guess, and that's what I was curious, whether the consultants would come back and say, I mean, ideally, we, the best sun in the area was the airport. Hypothetically, we could put one up there, but would we get the credit, you'd offset electricity at the sewer plant? And I guess that's what I was wondering, if that's what this consultant would come back and say, hey, I went through and studied this, and yeah, your, your areas where you're going to put it, no, no, no go, but if you put it up there or you did this, we can apply it there. And, and, and I guess that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, I think that is the goal for this RFP, is to have the consultant take a closer look. And from my understanding, the RES-BCT program does provide that type of flexibility like you're talking about of maybe having an off-site location. But again, having a consultant actually verify that and, and tell us what would be the better option or, you know, more.
Hypothetically speaking, then, if that were the case, and again, I know that there are different rate programs, so if we went one versus the other, that if we said, hey, we want to put some carports up at the city parking lot and apply those credits to the sewer plant, I, I think that would be fair with the rate payers because they're getting the offset. But obviously, getting the power credits to the county or whatever, it's a different deal. So.
All right. Any other?
Matt, yes.
Matt, did you have one?
I think it's pretty clear, but I just wanted to clarify for myself, too. We're not approving any actual project. We're not approving a location or which program we're, we're approving, getting a, an RFP so that an expert company that handles this kind of thing is familiar with all the rules and, and the different.
Right, so they can develop a proposal. This is what we recommend.
So all we're doing right now is just saying, this is okay to ask consultants to submit their proposal to us. And when we get that proposal, we'll maybe dive into more, more details about exactly what do we, what do we want.
Correct. You're setting the box.
Yeah. And I think it's wonderful that you brought it to us at this early stage so we could, you know, kind of ask questions and figure out whether.
You know, another issue that we're going to have to look at is if the city invests significant money in an infrastructure that results in lower energy consumption at the wastewater treatment facility, a facility that's operated with our partner, Brook Trails, how does that weigh in? And so I, I imagine that when we get a proposal, that it'll, the next step will be for the managers to get together and have a, have a dialogue or for committees of the two organizations to get together and negotiate this issue because, I mean, it may behoove Brook Trails to want to also invest into a program that's going to reduce the electricity costs for them, the wastewater treatment plant. But that, that's a whole other issue that we're going to have to discuss down the road.
Those are good points to keep in mind. Thank you.
Yeah, my, my feeling in general about this is that, at least potentially, it's a win-win because we want to reduce our energy consumption for environmental reasons, and we also want, it will incredibly save a lot of money if we do it right. So I, I think getting a really competent set of proposals from people that handle this sort of thing to help us design how we move forward is, is just going to be a win-win. So I'm, I'm totally in favor of it.
All right. And with that, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to address us on this matter? If you don't mind coming up to the podium and stating your name for the record.
Ragda Zakaria, 266 Cool Street.
Talk a little louder for us, if you could, too.
Is it on?
That doesn't amplify it, just.
Oh, okay. Is this better?
That's just for the people that are watching on TV?
Sure. I am just a little bit puzzled over this action because what are our priorities? We already increased the cost to take care of the cost of the wastewater treatment last year, and that cost was added to our monthly dues that's going to go up and up and up for the next, I believe, six years. And now we want to spend $2 million and we want to hire consultants to pay the money to tell us what's best, how to spend our money for Willets, that our budget is in the red, we need to take care of our streets, there are more important projects we need to spend the money on. And I really appreciate the presentation, Leilani, however, why are we hiring consultants for everything? We, we're going to hire consultants and pay them, how much are they going to cost us? And then we're going to, and then to, the energy consumption is going to be for the library, museum. City Hall, we have to build carports. What's the cost of that? And how is that going to impact and benefit the whole city? I mean, on how much these four buildings, including the museum, which is on the rock, dollar-wise, how is that going to reduce our costs? What's the benefit for the city as a whole? And I like to see numbers before we hire consultants and pay them thousands of dollars because, of course, they love to take the project, that's their bread and butter. But what's that, how is that on the priority list of what we need to do for Willets?
Well, could I, could I just give you my answer?
Yes, ma'am.
Would that be all right? Sure. So I think that when you, when you talk about, there's a, it seems as if maybe you think we're going to spend more money and your rates will continue to go up that wasn't already budgeted. But the fact is, remember how your rates are going to go up a little bit each year?
Mm-hmm.
Your rates are going up each year because we've already budgeted this in there.
Correct.
So it's not going to go up on top.
I understand, but why we're going to go to another level and use $2 million from what we, we had a huge presentation last year about the water treatment, and we had to be convinced of the increase of rate. Just keep that $2 million to take care of the water waste treatment first.
Okay.
That's just my common sense.
I'd be happy to talk with you afterwards. Thank you for your public comment.
My pleasure.
All right. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to address us? All right. Hearing done, I'll bring it back up here. Thank you for bringing this RFP before us. It sounds like there's been lots of important conversation around it. And I see two hands here.
Go ahead, guys. I understand the concept, and I like it, but this is, I'm going to vote no on it. I'll just put this way.
Can you tell us why?
Yeah, because of the, of the not doing everything we could do to get the maximum amount of money for the other things that could do. And I'm concerned, I've had people already that are willing to see this, think that this is just the wrong direction to go as far as to have the street out here to be the main street in town. And that's what they're saying. And not everybody, but there are people that are saying that. And when I, I was on the council for longer than anybody else, and when I went and looked at the, the parking lot on Wood Street, I could not believe that as a city and I and the rest of us have never lived that because that's the cheapest safety factor that we could possibly have. And we, we don't have it.
So is your concern around the fact that you'd like to see the solar panels, if possible, over on that Wood Street parking lot?
Absolutely.
It's not that you have an issue with putting up solar panels to save energy and be energy efficient?
No, I do not.
Just on like the location because you, you know that there's a need over that?
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to understand.
I don't remember the numbers anymore, but Andrea, a couple of years ago, said, maybe you have the numbers on hand. How much do we pay for electricity for the sewage treatment plant per year? It's, it's lots. It's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, I believe, just for paying the. It's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, I believe, just for paying the electricity. And the goal of this is not to beautify City Hall, not to beautify even, you know, there's other issues, but the goal is to save money and power at the sewage treatment plant. If we get an RFP that doesn't accomplish that, we might not go ahead with the project, but that's what it has to pencil out. Does somebody have that number, how much it is approximately, per year, City Hall?
Budgeted approximately $170,000 to $190,000.
$170,000 to $190,000 per year, just for the electricity of the sewage treatment plant?
Only that.
Yeah, only that. Okay, thank you.
And if I recall correctly, the thinking was that the rates were going to continue to increase, and that would potentially push the council at some future date to the point that they had to increase rates again to the super ratepayers, because the costs of paying for electricity were so high. So by transitioning to a solar plant, a solar program for the wastewater treatment plant, we could actually avoid that scenario and not have to come back and ask to increase the rates again to super ratepayers. Correct?
Correct.
And it was my understanding during the budgeting process, then we, when we came up with those rate increases, that we factored in, if we did solar, because that was a big if, because it depended on one of these consultants coming in, we would go X, or if not, we would, if solar turned out not to be possible. And I think that was the, I remember a discussion during.
Correct.
Our budget.
You had two options to factor into your decisions regarding the wastewater treatment rate, wastewater rates, solar or no solar. And the council at that time voted to have the rate package that supported the solar.
To give us that option.
Yes.
I mean, I think that's kind of what I was getting at earlier, that I support something that reduces costs. Again, I agree with you, Larry. If, it's not a beautification thing down there for me, as much as saving money. If, if the consultant told me that putting a solar array slash carport at, in the downtown could give us credits for down there, I think it's a no-brainer. I don't care where the things go, whether it's here or wherever, if we can get those credits. If they tell us no, then I think we need to scale the project to where we get the maximum benefit for our ratepayers down there, and we figure out another way to pay for it, whether it's here or whatever. I mean, I think that's realistic, is the way I look at it.
I think the comments that member Connie made regarding helping to give the council some control of your future on rates, PG&E are only going to go up. This gives you a control measure to offset that, to supplement the rates, and we're looking at multiple years. There's several options on the financial and the packages that will be presented to the council if you proceed with this RFP, that you can look at, and there'll be savings over time. It's like any solar project, it doesn't pay upfront, it's the long term. So this council will be making a commitment for this community for infrastructure support for 20-plus years. It's your legacy.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Stafford Foundation, the request for proposal for Energy Services. I don't think I'm going to read the whole thing, but as presented in the, in the report, or in the agenda packet.
There a dollar amount attached to that match?
No, it's an RFP, and so the proposers.
Just clarifying.
The proposers will propose a dollar amount, and that will come back to the council later.
So no dollar?
No. No dollars.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
You know what, I'll second it, because we do have the option to look at this again and add more input, so, for that reason, I will second it, and I do not want to keep paying PG&E.
Can I say something real quick? I believe we need to add that it's the City Hall staff parking area, not the City Hall staff that we're going to put the solar panels.
Yes, and can we also address the information that Attorney Lance provided, that this would only be for.
City infrastructure.
City infrastructure, not the museum and library.
Yeah. So remove library and museum off of the.
If the thing sits over there, we get the benefit.
You made the motion, so Matt needs to amend the motion.
I agree with some of the points that were just made.
My question, I guess, was, if it turned out that a tiny additional number of kilowatts were being generated more than, that it's efficient to do it, and we could contract with the county museum, or the, you know.
That's not in the RFP. You made, you made a motion.
The, I know, I was just gonna, I'm asking a clarification question. But as far as the motion, I agree that it's not the staff that would be the site, it would be the park, the parking areas. But because it also, in the agenda item, it says the library and museum, and I want to clarify, is that, is it illegal?
We just discussed that, and the answer is, is that it is illegal. We are going to strike through it.
Okay.
So in your motion, would you be striking through?
Yeah, let's strike those for now. Okay.
So the words "the library and museum" will be stricken from item 9D.
And add the word parking after City Hall?
Yes.
Parking area?
Or, yeah. Yeah.
Is that your motion?
It's a hall, parking areas. Is that right?
Yes.
The proposed project consists of 38.0, yeah. And I just want to, again, say that it's a little confusing, because it sounds like we're approving sort of a specific project, which we're not. We're just an RFP addressing these potential projects. So, yeah.
All right. We have a motion. Councilmember, or, sorry, Vice Mayor Gonzalez has a second, so I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote, if there's no further comments.
Councilmember Strong.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
No.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes. So the motion carries four to one. All right. Moving on, Department of Monthly Reports, those are inside your packet. I'll go around, is there, Kathy, do you have anything you want to add?
Nothing. Summer was pointed at there.
Anything further from Community Development, or any highlights?
First off, thank you, Dolores, for striking the option for staff to carry solar panels around on our back, although that would probably be a good workout, and I could certainly use it, figure out some different ways to accomplish that. One error, and then just to highlight a couple of things that weren't included into the report here. Under staffing items, it talks about entering into a contract with BPR Consulting Group. That's actually old news, and it was just an error on my part. I probably was just working off a previous draft and failed to delete that, so that's not new news. It certainly is true and accurate, it's just old news. And then also, council's aware of a handout that was passed out right before the meeting by our clerk, that was prepared by the department there. And, you know, the great thing is, is that the city's working on multiple cool projects at the same time, including the Beautify Willets project, that's being fully funded by a $2.77 million grant that we received from the state through the Clean California Program. And then we're also working on the conceptual plan, the East Commercial Corridor Plan. And there's been some confusion with the public, understandably, and so the point of that handout was to certainly highlight the two separate projects. They're different, but there is some overlap, and so that handout attempts to provide some clarity on that. And I did also want to note that we were able to create a Facebook post using that with some additional language, so we're going to continue to help clarify and provide information on both projects, but hopefully that'll help towards the goal of clarifying the difference, as well as some of the overlap between the two projects. The overlap being, even though we had to submit the grant application, I think in April of last year, prior to drafting the East Commercial Street Plan, it just happens to be that some of the improvements being identified in the East Commercial Street Plan were already funded and identified by that grant. So, and in the handout, we do identify which improvements those are. And happy to answer any questions, and then I also wanted to give our building official, Davey Bowles, an opportunity to talk about an upcoming program that might be of value to the community there.
I think Councilmember Connie has a quick question.
Not a question, but a comment. I can't even remember, at this point, what committee meeting we were in where we discussed putting something like this together, and I just wanted to say stellar job, this is excellent. I think this answers so many of the questions that I fielded, and I really appreciate it, so, good job.
Thank you.
Can I recall a button?
Davey, did you want to mention the Earthquake Brace and Bolt Program? So we did put out a couple Facebook blasts, but the Earthquake Brace and Bolt Program, the city enrolled in in 2022. You have to opt into the program. So we got zero applicants in 2022. Last year, we had two people take advantage of this program, and were awarded this program, so one house over in Northbrook area, and the other house, I believe, off of Valley. But the Earthquake Brace and Bolt Program is for $3,000 to help seismically retrofit houses older than, you know, three-year-old, prior to 1980. But they go, basically allow you to spend that money to fasten your house to your foundation, or put in seismic strapping, basically retrofit your house to keep it on its foundation. It is quite a, quite a good project, program. A lot of our houses qualify. If you guys could get the word out to anyone who's interested in it. We had a lot of people last year come and talk to me about it, and we, you know, told them to keep a lookout for it. The problem with this is they don't have the application period the same every year, it changes by zip code. So ours is currently open, and it's open registration until February 21st. And if you have, so it does have an extra component for low income. If your household income, I believe, is $87,000 or less, you can get up to $7,000 for your retrofit, which would pretty much pay for, you know, 100% of your seismic retrofitting. So anyway, it's out there. Community Development has put it on Facebook. If you see it and you know anyone that is interested, please pass that along. Councilmember Stransky?
Is this to put up footing in, in the foundation underneath that older house?
It's not for putting in a new foundation, it's for retrofitting your mudsill to your foundation, and applying sheathing and structural repair. Yeah.
So Davey, I went through the process to see how complicated it was, so that when people ask.
It's not easy.
And a couple of things I discovered, is it has to be owner-occupied, first of all. But then when I started going through the questions, some of them were pretty technical, and I didn't know the answer to them, so I had to just give my best guess, and then in the end, it said you didn't, I didn't qualify, so then I had to go back and figure, well, did I answer that question right? And I thought, is there a place that, who would they call to help them figure out some of those technical questions?
You're welcome to come right here.
So if people have questions, they can come to you?
Yes, we can help you, we can help facilitate that.
Because I can see that being an obstacle for people when they're going through that process. I was struggling with it.
Yeah, there's, there's some terminology that's complicated, that's kind of in the seismic world that they use, and, yeah. But yes, we're more than happy to help answer those questions.
I'll send them your way. Thank you.
Please do, because we only had two, and we'd like to get dozens.
Chris and I actually looked into doing this at our house a few, several years back, and we talked to, I think, three different contractors, and nobody wanted to do it. They didn't want to crawl under our house, they didn't want to do it. Do you have a list of local people who might be willing to do that? Because I've actually heard that complaint from other homeowners.
Correct. So the, and I've actually talked to multiple contractors to try and talk them into signing up. There are contractors, so they're listed on the Brace and Bolt website. There are contractors out of Santa Rosa. We are trying to get more local contractors to fill this niche, because it is a good, it's a good fit for a lot of our smaller contractors, because, you know, the three-to-eight-thousand-dollar jobs, and they're pretty quick, and, and, you know, you know your client's going to pay, because they got this $3,000 grant. So we are trying to get more local contractors to get on the list. But yeah, currently, there are contractors out of Santa Rosa, and there is the owner option. I mean, I know, obviously, some people do not want to do the work themselves, but that is an option. You don't get paid for your own labor, unfortunately.
So this is completely paid for, not out of city funds? It's a.
Correct. This is, this is paid for, out of state funding.
The other question I had is, in addition to Facebook, have you put an article, or several articles, in the Willets Weekly, and I don't know, on bulletin boards or whatever? Because it's sort of disappointing, that this is a very important upgrade for older houses, to be able to bolt to their, to their foundations in the event of earthquake, and it's disappointing that so few people are applying, and if there's technical assistance that you're providing, again, basically at no cost to the homeowner, I mean, cost.
It was on Facebook, there was a Facebook post, and then the, if you go to the city's website, they have latest news links.
I'm just thinking, there's a lot of people, especially in older houses, who are older people, who don't go on Facebook, and don't.
Or don't go to the city's website.
I'm actually kind of guilty myself. So I'd love to see at least an article that lets people know that assistance is available, and this is a program that they might qualify for, at no cost to them, to have it in the newspaper as well.
Thank you. We'll try to get that out.
Or, how hard would it be to put these types of, whether it be the housing rehab program we talked about earlier, or the bolting, in with our water bill, with an insert, so that those, so that those people who are using city services could easily find out that way?
It's definitely something we could do, but it, with our equipment that we have, putting more than one flyer in at a time can be difficult and time-consuming.
Do we usually have one flyer in each billing?
We can, we can get one flyer in pretty easy.
Do we generally already have one flyer in?
No, not every billing cycle, no.
So we might be able to time it, and there's a time when we don't have something?
Okay.
I also just wanted to point out that doing the bolt and brace can also decrease people's premium for earthquake insurance. So if you're a homeowner and you carry earthquake insurance, it can have a double benefit.
Yeah, and I apologize for a short notice on this, we don't get notified until it opens up either, so it's kind of a.
Is there a deadline till the end of February?
February 21st.
Yeah, that's coming right up.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, if you have a question, go ahead and step up.
I have a question, please.
You just got to wait till you're up at the microphone, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I applied today, by the way, because I read everything coming from the city. I have a question for you, Davey. The $3,000 is that the total cost you already negotiated with contractor, who are willing to do the work, or should we expect more costs that I'll be hit with?
Yeah, so it depends on your, everyone's foundation is different. Obviously, your houses are larger, smaller, more complicated foundation, so you get $3,000. So your project may cost $3,000, or could cost $8,000 or more for the actual retrofit, but the program pays $3,000, and then up to, I believe, $7,000 for if you're a low-income.
Okay.
So it's, it's an assistance program, not like, we'll pay for it all kind of program.
Oh, I understand. It has a lot of questions, and I had to click on the exclamation mark to read about the questions. I just, yeah, my application got accepted, and I need to find out what's really the total cost.
Well, if you made it to the final, congratulations.
Yeah, so we'll see what happens. I'm supposed to get an email back.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for applying.
All right. Thank you, Community Development. We'll move on to Finance.
I think right now, I'm seeing any questions on the information that was provided for the quarterly reports.
No, I thought your report was filled with good information, nothing new. Anybody else? All right. I don't see the police department here this evening. Shall we, we'll just accept.
Do you have any questions I can fill in?
All right. All right. Anybody can defer to the report within the agenda. Services and Facilities?
I just have one addition to make instead, because it seems to be an important topic tonight is street lighting. So, I wanted to add sort of an update on that. In regards to the minutes from January 10th, it had come up in public communications about the Wood Street parking lot. We did look at it, and I agree, it is a very dark parking lot. We are going to look at that again to see what the costs were. Apparently, that's been looked at before, what it would cost to take, get infrastructure in there, and lighting, and how many pieces. I've been working with Dusty at looking at other options around town, too, about solar lighting, where infrastructure is too expensive to put in, and that might be a candidate for that. I'm also being in contact with Howard Hospital. Apparently, they're surplusing out about 20 almost new light standards that are LED anodized bronze that they remove because of a solar project. And they might be available, that we could get at a very reduced price and everything, and be able to use in some facilities. A lot of it just depends on the infrastructure, just how we're going to assess the Wood Street parking lot and other areas. Right now, we've also been working in PG&E. I go around town, and I depend on people in this community where lights are out. And we've been reporting those to PG&E. Currently, on our list, we have three lights that are out on, where is it?
Creekside?
What was that?
Creekside?
Yes, Creekside, excuse me, yeah. Three of them out there, and those are very obsolete light fixtures, and those are on their repair list. And we will see if those can get repaired or retrofitted. But those are the only three right now. And I, you know, encourage the community, when they see lights out, to report them to us. There is a light number on there that I report to PG&E, and PG&E will then service them. So, we've been working on that. But we are moving ahead at looking at Wood Street parking lot and other places that, if people suggest that have, you know, subpar lighting, that we can help improve those.
Do we have anybody assigned to, or have you had the opportunity to look into solar light poles?
Dusty and I have talked about it, looked, and we've been researching it, yes, and everything, about which ones would work. And there's been talk about certain projects where we can apply them to. And yes, we are looking at that as another option, where electrical infrastructure is either too difficult or expensive to put in, yes.
And potentially, any grants that could be out there to support that?
And there might be, yes. I believe we've got information about that.
Well, I was just going to add that with that Clean California grant that I was referencing earlier, we're hoping, or we literally have funds identified for approximately 24 new solar streetlights to augment existing lighting along Main Street.
So, is your thought that we wouldn't put 24 along Main Street, that we might move some of those to the Wood Street parking lot?
We know that, sorry, that the grant specifies the location on Main Street, so I don't believe we could change our line to put on that.
That would be a separate project. We're looking at Wood Street and other places as separate projects.
Thank you for the update, Walter. I do appreciate that you're both actively working on that. I want to point out that the Wood Street parking lot, for years and years, was a dirt pit. Most of us, I think, remember that. And, you know, there were no lines. It was just a free-for-all. It turned into a muddy hole during, you know, the winter. So, it was a real upgrade when it was paved and turned into what it looks like today. Unfortunately, at the time that that was done, there were no conduits for electricity put in. So, this idea now of going back and putting in street lighting is complicated by the fact that we didn't plan ahead. There wasn't a conduit put in the way that we did on Main Street when we redid Main Street, thinking that ultimately, at some point, we'd want to have new street lighting. So, it creates not only a complication, but an expense. My hope is that going forward, whenever the city is doing new paving projects, we're thinking about that, that we have some new policy in place, that we're making sure that we're at least creating options for future councils when community members come forward and say, hey, can we retrofit this to have a new function? So, I haven't heard, yes, we have a new policy, and we're always installing electrical conduit, but I would hope that that's something that we're all thinking about.
It's not necessarily a policy. I think it's just an awareness. And we are looking at that and stuff, a comprehensive look at infrastructure. And when we do new projects, that's definitely being looked at. Yes, yeah, yeah. Yes, Larry?
I think that you could just do a solar thing at different spots in the Wood Street parking lot. And just, you know, leave them on for just a certain amount of time until the battery, I mean, I don't know how much it charges up or whatever, but you don't have to put conduit in. You can just put it and go with the battery, and that's enough light.
Yes, some of those fixtures run, would run the night and everything. They're very efficient. There are integrated batteries on some of them. It's not a separate battery pack on them. So, yes, they are able to be mounted in places that you don't have electrical infrastructure or it's too expensive. So, that's why we're looking at those as options for difficult areas.
Anyhow, that's my suggestion. Thanks.
Yes, but it is being looked at, yes.
And Walter, since you brought up lighting and working with PG&E, I know that Nikki brought it up at a meeting, and another city resident brought it up on another street about the area being dark. Have you been able to kind of investigate those areas and find out?
There's areas that could use lighting, yes. I think we're going to do a much more comprehensive plan. We're trying to fix the lighting we have right now. And then, areas like Wood Street parking lot are definitely high on the list to look at. But then, there are infill areas that, there's a lot of places around town, a lot of neighborhoods that have dark areas and everything, and I think.
I guess it behooves as a city, as Larry pointed out, that the public comes here and complains, and to have a price tag associated so that we know that, hey, I'd like me to tell Nikki, you know what? You're not on the list this year because they cost $10,000 each, and we're going to do one, we're going to do three a year or something, that we can give the public an answer.
Yeah, pretty soon, we could get a unit cost, especially with solar lighting, and get an idea for installation or per unit cost and sort of extrapolate that and be able to, you know, give a rough ballpark for areas and stuff. If we have to put one to five lights or something, we can have an idea, yes.
And that way, you know, it helps the budget, because, I mean, I think that's when it comes back to us, that, you know, the public comes to us and says, look, we are working on this. You're on the list, kind of like our street improvement plan, you know?
Yes.
You don't get payment this year, but you get chip seal. Or in this case, you qualify for solar because the infrastructure isn't there, or, but we have to, you know, put it in the budget, and this is when you might get it or could get it, or the, or it's impossible to get there for some reason.
Right. And like you said, I encourage the public to, when they see lights out, to please call us. There's lights that have been reported to PG&E, that when they came out and looked at them, they started working. Some of them are hit and miss. They're, you know, working one day.
I believe you. Some of them, I'm just looking at some of the areas. I know that when they did the lights, I'm sure they, we didn't get, some cities have lights on both sides of the street.
Mm-hmm.
If you look at some of our streets, so light here, the next half block there, and they did that, and I'm sure it was a cost issue.
And some of the lighting technology has changed. Some of the newer lighting is much better than what's existing.
Yeah.
The ones on Creekside are very old fixtures, and they're not very good, even when they're working. So, yeah.
All these needs for improvement, we need to remember when it comes budget time.
Well, that's why.
Because we always have these conversations about what we need, and then we get to the budget, and then we all, you know, we've got to balance the budget and we feel the pressure. And then, we don't fund some things that are needed within the city, but then, I feel like sometimes we put it on staff, like, we need, we need. But then, if we can't afford it, when we go to do the budget, and we are the ones that set the budget, then it really can't happen. So, just making sure that we're keeping with our priorities and being realistic, too, about what we can afford or what pocket of money we can use, whether it be general fund, you know, water department, major K, whatever, whatever the need is.
I think it helps to have a realistic number, so that if it's cost prohibitive or whatever, then when we budget, then we know that we're not doing 100 lights this year, we're doing two, you know? And then, or maybe a year where we don't do any just because of the budget, and that's.
And the ones we will bring to you, you know, if there's safety issues, those are going to be high priorities. So, it, not just for aesthetics, but if there are safety issues with Street Parking Lot, if it becomes, those are going to become very important then, and will, you know, get you some ideas of what those projects might cost then for future budgeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move on to City Council announcements, communications, and reports, and start with Vice Mayor.
All right. Me and Larry attended the Water, Wastewater Committee meeting on the, I believe, the 18th, and it was mostly updates. And I'm not sure, did we get current fund balances? I guess unaudited fund balances.
We did.
And then, we got Water, Wastewater Program updates, and apparently, the MOU Railroad Avenue, we're still waiting on the railroad. And still, I guess, still Water Main Project, still waiting on the engineer, I think?
We're waiting for the railroad, the MOU.
Oh, okay.
We were just in talks with them, and we're pushing that ahead.
And the maintenance building is still in design phase?
There's site work that needs to be done with that early February by SHN, the engineering firm.
We're waiting on that South Main Street water valve replacement that's going to have this kind of bore underneath and not cut water, but.
That's the one that, so there's less disruption. The valve comes in in mid-February and installing right after that.
Yeah, and then, we got no new news from the Pine Mountain and Sherwood Valley Tribe folks on the MOUs. And then, reservoir water modeling proposal flow releases, where, can you remind me on that one, Walter?
We're moving ahead on that. We're getting a budget amendment for Laco to proceed with the modeling proposal, yes.
And then, the inflatable barrier dam project, that's still on, I guess.
And we're meeting with state agency in about a month. The person, the engineer who we were dealing with earlier on is out on leave until the beginning of March, and we have a site visit for the beginning of March to come out and revisit the Obermeyer.
And the steel tank.
I think that that's a really big thing, more than we know, because they have to let water out in order to put the board in.
Right, and this is what that project will get away from, is, yes.
That's why I think this is a big one.
It's important, yes.
And our steel tank, we're waiting on design, I guess?
There's a few, we just, the contract had expired with the proposal. We're just getting an updated proposal. And yes, Laco is finishing up some design on that one, yes. And we're moving ahead on that. And that'll go to bid in springtime.
And then, we're waiting on the Little Lake Mobile Home Park Water Sewer Service request from the county, I guess it's the.
No, we sent, yeah, we sent out a letter to them saying that we were interested in looking, going ahead and looking at the potential project of hooking in the Little Lake Mobile Home Park into our system. It's not promising anything.
The state, right, not the county?
Yeah, with the state. And Dave acknowledged it and are happy that we're moving ahead with it, and we're waiting for the next step from them, where the state goes with this, yes.
So, that was basically a recap of that meeting, so. And then, I attended a League of Cities online Public Safety Committee meeting on that Friday, the 19th. And the crux of it is that one of the main things they are looking at is retail theft as a whole, and some iteration of, you know, there's a resistance on the state and the governor's part as far as, I believe it's Prop 47, that decriminalized a lot of things. And there's a big push from a lot of cities that they want something done about all the retail theft that's happening. And so, there's movement in that area there, that they want to see a priority in bringing some, something back. And I think they argue that they all want to be known as the League of No, because there's some proposals coming up. And so, there, there were some things that got tabled to March. I don't think I'll be attending the March meeting because it's in Burbank, and you have to fly in for like a three-hour meeting and fly back. So, I don't think I'll be spending the city money. And so far, they haven't made arrangements to make that online. So, I'll be attending the meeting in June in Sacramento, so.
And then, there was a meeting that we're going to be hosting here in Walts. Do you want to talk about that?
Dolores, what day is that? The 8th?
It's March 8th.
March 8th. And that's the local Redwood Region League of Cities. Dolores is still working with our rep from Sarah from the League.
When is that?
March 8th. And I think it'll be, the meeting will be at 1:00, the business meeting. And then, they're trying to work out, because it'll be the other cities in our region that would be coming here. And so, they've kind of laid out the other dates. Because right after I got it, they hadn't sent any of the dates yet, so I really didn't know until I got Dolores's email, and then I called Sarah, and I said, what are the rest of them, so I can calendar them, so.
So, some cities send their entire City Council, some will send two, one, three, especially with us hosting here. I think it'll be particularly important for us to have a good showing. So, if we're, each of us are available on March 8th, it sounds like it's worth attending, and, yeah.
So, that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Stransky?
Terry just gave my, well, I don't know.
Anything else you want to add on there?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Connie?
I already gave my update regarding the museum meeting, but do you have a time to have a meeting with our mayor? Do you want to discuss that, or?
Go ahead.
Okay. For me, the takeaway was that we are moving forward on completing our meeting, two years of audits. And Manny is hopeful that we will have this completed by end of year, calendar year, the 21, 22.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year for one of them, and then the second one by end of calendar year.
I'm sure both of them by end of fiscal year.
Woo, that's bold, okay. Well, if we can do that, that would be tremendous. I did make the suggestion that the council consider returning to an annual budget cycle until the audits are complete. My feeling is just, I personally am uncomfortable budgeting without finalized audit numbers. I know that it was not a popular suggestion with Manny or Brian. I understand that doing an annual budget is quite a bit more work and time-intensive than doing a biannual budget. I like the biannual budget in concept, but until our audits are complete, I just feel like it would be physically prudent for the council to consider returning to the annual cycle and then looking at moving back to a biannual once we have gotten our footing beneath us. That was just my personal opinion, but I wanted to share that with the rest of the council to put that out there. That's all I've got.
And if I could just add that we talked a bit about sales tax and where the sales tax comes from in the city, and trying to mitigate some risk factors and trying to be proactive in reaching out to businesses, particularly our top 25 sales tax producers. And I did notice, when I was reading through the agenda, we had the report on sales tax and looking at how the sales tax has been significantly impacted here in our local community compared to, you look at the state, I think the state was up, was it 2%, whereas locally, I think we were down an average of, I think it's 10.9, you can refer, 10.8, you can look in there. But the biggest impact that affected our sales tax was the gas, the transportation tax. I think it was down, was it 37%?
I have to take a look.
It was pretty significant. So, and we did have conversation at that last finance meeting about, and we've been hearing from the public as well, about how our gas stations' prices are higher. And so, that definitely is going to impact city budget.
17.5%.
17.5% is what it ended up at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we'll be keeping a close eye on sales tax revenue as it affects local businesses and also the city's budget. Any other committees or boards? Okay.
As usual, I have three committees that I represent us for. One of them will be meeting February 1st, which is sort of the hour. And I'm not quite sure whether that's going to be held virtually here at City Hall, or whether I'm lucky to attend, because I'm going to go through some medical stuff. So, but that's coming up on February 1st. During January, we have meetings of the Economic Development Financing Corporation, which is now adjusting to not being an official county entity, so they don't have to go through the Brown Act and other kind of revising the bylaws. But the actual business of the EDFC is mostly providing loans to businesses, also Lake County, some even in SML County. And that seems to be going very well. They have, it's available to any business that wants to fund their operation. They have not been able to financing some traditional things. So that's the EDFC. And then the other one is the Minnesota Solid Waste Management Authority. At the meeting we had in January, other of the board members, five board members, also joined me and wanting more information about how the private contractor, CNS, with Highway Solutions, how they are addressing all of the remote and onsite collections and how that compares with what we expect and used to have when it was provided in-house. So we're going to have another meeting in February to get more detailed reports. I have been complaining that I didn't feel like getting enough information, but I think others, it's starting to happen. Those are the three official committees that--
Thank you. For Mendocino Transit Authority, the exciting news is really about our partner county, Humboldt County Transit, now has a bus that runs all the way from Humboldt County to Ukiah and through grant funding, it's $2 for an introductory ride that you can go all the way from Eureka to Ukiah. There is some, there is some community frustration that you have to, because the layover in Ukiah, in Ukiah is only, I think it's a half an hour or an hour? Yeah, I think it's a half an hour. So it doesn't give you much time. You pretty much have to spend the night there. If you're coming to Willets, on the other hand, you've got some extra time, you've got an hour and a half before the bus goes back the other way. But it does meet the needs of many people. Veterans have talked about being able to get back and forth and others and then people have asked, how much is it going to cost after the $2 introductory rate goes away? And it's the hope that they can maintain it for $10 or less. That's the goal and it's a good step. You know, we've been talking about being able to offer transit services through Mendocino Transit Authority to the Leightonville community and even further up and so we've been hoping that this would happen and they got, they were able to secure the funding and make it happen and it is already actively happening. You may have seen the bus come through town, so that's good news. Let's see, I had one more comment and that was just on, as a council member, I reached out to the new trash company, what is the name of that company?
Redwood Solid Waste.
What is it?
Redwood Solid Waste--
Redwood Solid Waste Solutions. I did send an email to them, but unfortunately, they did not respond and so I just want the community to know that their concerns have been heard. I'm making an attempt to try and reach out to them and hopefully resolve some of them, but I have not received a response from, from that entity yet. So I'll send another email and see if we get another response and I'll report back. All right, I have nothing further to add. Do we have any Gooden Welfare this evening?
Well, I just wanted to add that at the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority, I did also mention that the rollout of the transition from SWO to the new company was rocky and other people had heard that as well and CNS, which is the parent company, I guess, of the new owners of Solid Waste of Willets, heard that, you know, they need to do better. So I think they were there and they heard that. Okay, Gooden Welfare?
Gooden Welfare.
Pick me back in. I'm going to again announce on February 4th, Sunday, at 4:00 PM, a week from Sunday, WEL, Willets Economic Localization, is hosting an open house and it's a 20th birthday celebration and brainstorming for where do we go from here? What's working well in Willets, what can be better? Not just the town of Willets, but the whole 95490 zip code area and quite a few people are expressing ideas for, you know, what could be done and we'd love to have your ideas and volunteers to implement ideas that come up and we'll have some cake to celebrate our birthday. The other thing I wanted to announce, and I don't have all the dates in my mind, I didn't bring them, but there's going to be several candidate forums for the Assembly District that Jim Wood is not running for reelection and there's seven candidates, I think five Democrats and two Republicans, and there's several candidate forums. One of them, I believe, might be January 29th, I think it's a Monday night, I'm not sure about the date, but that's going to be at the Grange and it's being organized by the Willets Environmental Center.
Isn't there one tomorrow night?
I don't think there's one tomorrow. Then there's several others that are being organized by the Mendocino--
League of Women Voters?
Yeah, League of Women Voters and I think also, yeah, anyway, it's a great, some of them are by Zoom, several of them are in person, but the one right in Willets that's in person is going to be at the Grange and if you want, I'll give that information to Dolores and she could--
There's actually a flyer in our bulletin board that was brought by yesterday, that's hanging with me.
So it's a, it's a pretty exciting opportunity to see how we're represented in our Assembly District and whoever, the top two vote-getters in March 5th primary go to the runoff in November. So, good to--
One of the candidates is from Willets.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a woman on the flyer. She, apparently she was a late entry and didn't, they didn't have time to get her picture for the flyer. I don't know her. I did not recognize--
We couldn't recognize her name. I didn't know that. I thought there were, there's more than seven, is this the dates?
She's--
Okay.
And then I felt to mention that we had the event here at the senior center last week, the State of Things, and Councilmember Stransky and Vice Mayor Gonzalez were there with me as myself has checked and Representative from Wood's office gave a presentation on the State of Things, so thank you both for attending that and hope to see everybody on Friday night at the senior center for the chili cook-off.
Oh, great. I forgot to mention, February 4th at 4:00 PM is at the WEL office, which is two doors south of Mariposa Market, right on Main Street.
Edie Ciccarelli's birthday is February 5th.
Yes, yes.
And I think, are they doing a drive-by?
They are, they are. I will have a proclamation ready for the mayor to present at her party. So the plan is at 11:30, I'll be reading the proclamation to Edie. It'll be videotaped, she'll receive some other awards at the same time and then we'll leave, she'll take a short nap and then at, when it's 1:00, we'll get ready for the parade and then we'll do, we'll do the parade.
So you're going to videotape it there?
I'm not videotaping, they're having somebody there that is--
Oh, videotape as you're reading.
That's videotaping me, I'll be reading the proclamation as others will also be presenting other, other awards for her status.
Because that's the one I know has to drive something by.
Yeah, yeah, that's happening at 11:00, they're expecting that, 11:30, 11:30 sharp. 11 is something like cake and then 11:30 is the-- Yes, cake and then re, and then released-- And 1:00. And then go back. And the parade's on. All right. With that, we will adjourn at 8:48. Thank you.